Herndon Town Council Public Hearing, August 13th, 2019.
Good evening. Thank you for being here. I'll call the meeting to order and ask that you join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would like to take a moment to warmly welcome our newly appointed Director of Public Works, Scott Robinson. We just had his swearing in just before tonight's meeting, and we'd just like to welcome you aboard. We're glad you're here. And additionally, Councilmember McKenna is unable to be here this evening. He is away on business. So first up, we have two sets of minutes up for approval. Is there a motion to approve the July 2nd Work Session Minutes?
Second.
Discussion on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, and I will abstain. Is there a motion to approve the July 9th Public Hearing Minutes?
Second.
Discussion on that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed, that motion carries. Tonight, we have one presentation, which is to recognize the 30th anniversary of Dr. Finley's Family Eye Care here in downtown Herndon, and it is my privilege to read this proclamation this evening. "A Town of Herndon Proclamation Recognizing the 30th Anniversary of Dr. Finley's Family Eye Care. The Mayor and Town Council of the Town of Herndon, Virginia hereby recognize and celebrate the 30th anniversary of Dr. Finley's Family Eye Care in downtown Herndon. We highlight Dr. Finley's practice, which opened in 1989 and serves as the leading provider of quality vision care and personalized optometry in the town, and we express our appreciation to Dr. Finley and his staff, who offer comprehensive vision examinations, diagnosis, and treatment of a wide array of eye conditions. Throughout the past 30 years, the eye professionals at Dr. Finley's Family Eye Care have provided exceptional service and are dedicated to the health and welfare of their patients. Further, the Mayor and Town Council of the Town of Herndon, Virginia hereby congratulate Dr. Finley, who in addition to his excellent service as a family eye doctor, has spent countless hours of his time volunteering for several groups and organizations in the Herndon area. Dr. Finley is an active member of the Herndon Rotary Club, serving as its past president, Herndon Chamber of Commerce, where he was a board member, Herndon Optimist Club, Knights of Columbus, where he was a past board member, and as a past board member and contributor for the Jeannie Schmidt Free Clinic, which is now HealthWorks for Northern Virginia. Dr. Finley has also received many awards and accolades for his community service and exceptional eye care. He has received the Town's Distinguished Service Award, the Chamber of Commerce's Small Business of the Year Award, Times Community Newspaper's Best Eye Doctor Award several times, the Jeannie Schmidt Free Clinic's Medical Specialty Practice of the Year, and was named the Virginia Optometry Association's Distinguished Optometrist of the Year. Further, the Mayor and Town Council of the Town of Herndon, Virginia hereby honor and thank Dr. Finley and Dr. Finley's Family Eye Care Center for their dedicated efforts in our community, helping to promote overall wellness and a healthier Herndon. And it is my privilege to read this as a patient of Dr. Finley. The reason I could read this is thanks to Dr. Finley, and don't worry, the town clerk made giant fonts so that I didn't stumble and embarrass myself too badly. We are thrilled to have you here. When we first moved into Herndon, I was excited. I tried to walk to as many things as I could and walked to my eye doctor, and not many people can say that. So the proclamation speaks for itself. You are such a dedicated and involved member of our community, and your wife as well. We see you at Friday Night Live, and you're everywhere. So we're grateful that you chose Herndon and are ready for the next 30 years or so. You must have been 12 when you started the practice. I'm sure there are other comments from council. Who would like to speak? Ms. Friedrichs?
As a fellow Rotarian and as someone...
Is that him? Can you hear me now?
As a fellow Rotarian and also a patient of Dr. Finley, I heartily endorse everything the mayor has just said. When I was working with the Council for the Arts of Herndon as a board member and then as Executive Director, Dr. Finley would donate some item of great value every year that allowed us to raise money for the arts. I am well aware that he is a huge defender of all civic groups and nonprofits, and I thank you so much. And I'm delighted that we are recognizing you tonight. Thank you. Who else would like to speak?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As a patient, I must say that in trying to read along, I think it's due for an upgrade to the prescription on those transition lenses I got a while back. So I'll be in to see you soon enough. So thank you.
Who else? Anyone else have it?
Thirty years is a long time, and especially serving people, it's even more special. So thank you for your service and congratulations. And you see, I might come to see you as well. I just have to make sure you take my insurance. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. He takes everything. So I'm also a patient. So thank you, Dr. Finley. And like the mayor said, I love that it's one more place I can walk to as well. You know, that's unusual. And so we love that your location, that you're in downtown. But of course, folks come from all around the area to go to Dr. Finley's Eye Care. Thank you for all you do to support the community, because that's so much of what this is about, right? Just recognizing you're one of those pillars of business owners, right? Who it's not just about running your business and being a great optometrist and having a great staff and other folks and providing great service, but it's also all the other things and all the other organizations that you support that make Herndon such a special place to live. So thank you for that. I love when I call there and I say my name, and they ask my birthday. I'm like, I'm not the sixth grader, because I think there's someone that's my same name, but she's like maybe in 12 or something. So I try to tell them it's the other Jennifer Baker. So thank you, Dr. Finley. Thank you. Madam Vice Mayor?
Yes. Known you for a while, been had the honor and pleasure to serve with you on several different groups, including Rotary. And one of the most fun things you've donated over the years for the tournament that Jimmy's and the Council for the Arts put on, you would always have something for the losers, and it was an eye exam. And I just thought that was just wonderful. So not only, and he always does a wonderful job when he speaks for us at Rotary as the emcee, so that's great. And my children go to him. And Matt will come from ODU or Tennessee. He won't go anywhere else. So we have to call and choreograph the appointment. So you're always really good to help him do that. Thank you very much. And thank you for all your service to the community.
Absolutely. My favorite story that happened at Dr. Finley's office, I wonder if you've remembered this. It was several years back during election season, and I walked in for my eye exam, and the staff looked kind of nervous. And I thought, what is up with that? I've been coming here for years. And then I looked across the waiting room, and another person running for mayor was in the waiting room. This is how, you know, you live in a small town, and everybody was a little on edge, and the two of us just sat there and chatted. And Dr. Finley tried to help us see eye to eye, and here we are. But that is my favorite small-town mayor story right there. So I would like to invite Dr. Finley forward. He has about a 30-minute speech prepared, I think. But we have the gong if we need it. What's that?
I really do speak.
Yeah. If you want to, you don't have to, but we'd love to hear from you.
I just want to say thank you very much. It's been a wonderful journey, great to live and work in the same town, and couldn't do it without the wonderful staff and wonderful family. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to come forward and express any anecdotes about Dr. Finley's office? They're afraid to. Okay, well, I would like to invite forward Dr. Finley and everybody who's here this evening to support this, and all of my fellow council members, town attorney and town manager will have the presentation. Come on down. Please bring the baby.
Oh.
I don't. Good, I don't.
That's true.
Is it weird?
We're looking at a town.
Oh, that one.
That's a cheer.
Hey, how's it going?
I know.
Hi. Congratulations. Oh, I knew you were gonna do that. But maybe we weren't gonna do that. You're so predictable.
Make it a picture.
What's up?
Hey. Hey, how's it going?
I know.
I know. It's hard to understand.
Hi. Congratulations. Oh, I knew you were gonna do that. But maybe we weren't gonna do that. You're so predictable.
Make it a picture.
What's up, man?
Hi.
How are you?
That's cool.
No, it's okay. I was taking advantage of you getting him.
Somebody's gonna give me a picture. Oh, not just...
Oh, wait, Dr. Finley.
Oh, wait, did you just leave?
He goes running away.
You didn't even see him. So this brings us to our comments portion of the agenda. Mr. Town Manager, do you have any comments for us this evening?
Yes, Madam Mayor, if you can indulge my cold for a few minutes. Next week's Farmer's Market on August 22nd, we'll be celebrating Keeping Green 30 Years and Counting. This will be the 30-year anniversary since we hired our first community forester, actually our only community forester, received our first designation as a tree city, and started the town's Farmer's Market. To celebrate, we will be, we have these nice handy-dandy reusable grocery totes that are made from recyclable material, and coasters also made of cork, a renewable resource that will be available while supplies last. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments from council? Mr. DeCall? Do you want to go first? I'll just go down the row.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's been a while for me. Attended many events, met a lot of wonderful people. One thing that stands out is the National Night Out. It was my first National Night Out as a council member, and it was a very memorable one. Met a lot of people, you know, built relationship with our law enforcement officers and also with the residents. You know, our residents felt really well to see both the council members as well as the law enforcement officers. So thank you for doing that, and thank you for inviting us in there. And it was a wonderful event. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Baker?
So we have two Friday Night Lives left, which starts the countdown to the end of summer, unfortunately. So please take advantage of those. And then don't forget on Labor Day that the Women's Club does still the Wine and Beer Festival. So make your way to that on Labor Day in downtown Herndon. And then finally, Next Stop Theater's new season kicks off very soon, in what, a week from Thursday? So August 22nd to September 22nd. They have six, they do six shows throughout the season, six different shows or musicals. This first one is Beehive. So if you like '60s music, if you like supporting the arts, and just a great way to spend a couple hours for a pretty low price, check out Next Stop Theater, Beehive. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If you didn't catch the last work session, we committed to doing another series of roundtable meet and greets of your mayor and council. So I believe the date will be set, if we haven't set it already. So please get the word out, yeah, October timeframe. So really looking forward to hearing from the residents out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Friedrichs?
Okay, let's see. I wanted to do a quick shout out to the participants at the Lake and Cardboard Boat Regatta. We had two entrants from Herndon, the Herndon Hobnobbers, which was made up of several Herndon businesses, including the Tea Shop and Rowan Tree and McDonnelly's Massage Business. And then we also had the Bucket List, which was rode by Al Hobson, Stephanie Wright, and Stefan Vaid Sanchez, as well the Dulles Triangles, placed delightfully well. So I would like to congratulate them all on their decent, respectable finishing times. I've been paying attention to the new businesses coming into town, and it seems that the former Kmart Shopping Center is progressing nicely. It looks beautiful on the outside. Periodically, I drive past, and I see that they still have a dirt floor, so they're not opening right away. But things are progressing in a nice, orderly fashion, which is nice. Looking forward to the new roundtable, and I'm also looking forward to new HPRB guidelines and getting some feedback on what's happening with Comstock, because I know we're going to be updated on that. Thanks.
Thank you. Madam Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you. Thoroughly enjoyed National Night Out and seeing a lot of neighbors that I don't normally get to see. Also plan to attend Beehive, and Arts Herndon just put in a new art exhibit, very large pieces, very modern art. So you might want to check it out. It'll be there for about a month, and it just started last weekend. And look forward to the Labor Day weekend and some fall weather. Thank you.
It's hard to believe Labor Day is around the corner. I wanted to share that, I guess it was last week, I was invited by Womata to participate in a bus tour, which was showcasing all of the new stations on the face two of the Silver Line. And so Dennis Holstein, our Economic Development Manager, and I were on the bus with their marketing team and a whole bunch of people, and we took them through the town and highlighted our downtown, the metro station area, the new development throughout the town, and our Herndon Festival, which they used to sponsor. So we threw that out there. So that was great. And the new pylon at Herndon Station has been installed, so it's so exciting, because one of the first things that we did back in 2010 was make sure there was a sign out on Herndon Parkway that said, hey, the metro station is going to be right here, because people didn't know where it was going to be. And so it's really exciting to see that pylon up. And they have projected that the date opening will be, I believe, July 16th of 2020, give or take. But that's their date that they've braved putting out in the press. So we hope that they will hit it closely. And one other thing I wanted to mention really quickly, and it has to do with one of our agenda items this evening. This is, the League of American Bicycleists had an article that went out, I guess, maybe yesterday, and it showcases the Town of Herndon specifically. They are creating a bicycle-friendly America, and their most recent round of bicycle-friendly community application closed last week with more than 60 communities applying to, for renewing their status. And it says, that number encompasses nearly 10 million Americans. It all starts with a plan, like in Herndon, Virginia, where no pressure, guys, but the Town Council is set to approve its first bicycle master plan as part of seeking a future bicycle-friendly community designation. So I'm not sure how we got that shout out, but I thought that was, that was nice to see. So we will see how that goes later in the evening. The next portion of our agenda is to, is the opportunity for anybody who's here to speak on any item that's not one of our public hearing items. If you'll come forward, state your name and address for the record. You have up to three minutes, and please wrap up when the red light comes on. So I know that we have, we have at least one person who's here this evening. Come on down.
Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Elaine Tolan, and I am actually at 182 River Park Drive in Great Falls. And I'm here tonight. Thank you very much. So everybody of you have asked me to stop by and say hello and introduce myself. I am running for the school board seat in Drainsville. Have lived in Drainsville for 25 years and have two boys that went all the way through Fairfax County Public Schools. Being a public servant is a cornerstone of my career. Most recently, I worked for Fairfax County Public Schools as a teacher, a program manager for the Environmental Management and Sustainability Program, a PTA officer, and a parent. I also have an MBA and have done large facilities management and budgeting, and that can always be put to use with Fairfax County Public Schools. I currently serve on the Northern Virginia Soil and Water Conservation District Board and have been enjoying that work. And I'm happy to say, we actually just awarded our $1,000 college scholarship to a Herndon High School graduate. Joseph Perotti is off to Virginia Tech and will be pursuing a degree in civil engineering and environmental engineering. We're super proud of that. Why am I running for school board? I care very deeply about schools, families, and children, and want to do the best for my community. And I actually think that with the experience that I have with Fairfax County Public Schools, not only do I want to make a difference, I know how to make a difference. I have positive working relationships across the school district, not only on the instructional side, but also in facilities, food and nutrition, and within the schools themselves. So I know where to go. I know where to advocate for you here in Herndon. The program that I was running for Fairfax County Public Schools, as I mentioned, Environmental Education and Sustainability. The important thing about that program was that it was student-driven, and that students were engaged in project-based and STEM learning at its best. And I'm proud to say that we had projects going on at, I've got the list here. I think it's pretty much covering Herndon. Herndon Elementary, Coats Elementary, Drainsville, Clearview, Herndon Middle School, Hutchison, and Herndon High School. So I've been in all of those schools over the years and have met staff there and worked with staff. Very recently have been in the schools, talking with some of the administrators about the amazing programs that they've got going on, and really look forward to a potential opportunity to continue that work and to tie the work that's happening in the schools even closer with the community. The program that I ran with the school district as well, we had 40 to 50 outside community partners. So is that my red light? Very used to, you know, doing that type of work. And I look forward to it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much for coming. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Arthur Nackman, 866 Vine Street. I regret coming down here tonight because I think I've followed all the procedures, and I'm seeking relief in front of you all this evening. I had a Public Works issue on Vine Street adjacent to my driveway. There's a drain pipe that collects sediment, and as the sediment continues to rise, the flow of water is retarded. It causes my neighbor's basement to flood. It also is eroding the ditch where the pipe empties, to the point that it's now pushed into Vine Street and will start eroding the asphalt on the street that has just been recently paved. I went on the website. I reported it. I sent an email to the town manager. I then followed up with a phone call to Public Works. I was then told that it was transferred to engineering, that they would get out and fix it. This has been going on for more than three months. So I don't understand the procedure, or I don't understand the follow-through, but if you just tell me, Arthur, we're not going to do anything, and we don't care, that's an answer I can live with. But if that's not the answer, I think three months is a little bit too long in order to solve a very simple problem. Thank you.
Thank you. I am sure you will hear from staff on that item. Thank you. Who else would like to come forward? I think I saw another hand. Yes, ma'am?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Bessie Denton. I live at 496 Virginia Avenue in town of Herndon. I'm calling and I'm here today in reference in Bruin Park. I walk through that park maybe three, four times a week. I've, all summer, I've been waiting to see if that park would be cleaned in a proper manner. Where the children play, it's full of grass, weeds are up to my knee. If you sit down to watch your child play, the weed will meet you and say hello. Okay? Because it's up to my, if you sit down, the weed is up to where you're sitting down. All summer, that park has not been maintained and kept up in a proper manner, because who wants their child to play or swing in an area that's full of weeds and grass? It has not been cleaned up. It has not been maintained like it needs to be. And if you walk through the grassy area, you're going to be ate up by, I don't know what kind of bugs those are, but your ankles will, will know that you have been through that. I just think it could be, it's a beautiful park. I just think it could be maintained a little bit better. And when I walk through it, I pick up trash constantly under the bleachers, especially one bleacher, because that's where all the teenagers gather and sit and chat, whatever they do. Throw bottles down, whatever, whatever they have. They throw it down on the ground. Trash cans sitting right next to them. I just think that things could be done a little bit different for that park, to keep the beauty of it, and maybe we can keep it a little bit longer. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. I believe that is maintained by Fairfax County in conjunction with our Parks and Rec Department. So I can see Cindy's face. We will get on that and see what we can do, because that's unacceptable. I agree with you.
I talked to someone last week from Fairfax County about that park, and they told me, bam, give it back.
Yeah. Well, we will get to the...
It's a back and forth. So you guys will get it fixed out.
We will get to the bottom of that. I appreciate you bringing it to this level.
Thank you.
We will get on it. Thank you. Who else would like to come forward? Anybody? Okay. Thank you very much. We have several public hearings this evening. The first one is ordinance 19023 to grant a 10-year telecommunications franchise to MCI Metro Access Transmission Services of Virginia Incorporated. I will open the public hearing, and I will announce that the town has received one bid from MCI Metro Access Transmission Services of Virginia, which has been entered into the record and is on file in the town clerk's office. And I need to ask if we have received any additional bids. No, ma'am, we have not. Okay. Hearing done. We will close the bidding process, and I will recognize Tammy Chastain, the Deputy Director of Public Works for the staff report.
Good evening. So this is a 10-year franchise for MCI Metro, because the previous one expired. This is simply a 10-year franchise. They're not adding or changing any of their current conduit. And this will follow the franchise fee for the VDOT's Right-Away Use Fee as well, which they've been doing in the past. So that's...
All right. Okay, so thank you. Are there any questions from council? Okay. Thank you. This is a public hearing, so if their applicant or applicant's agent is here and would like to come forward, we welcome you at that time, at this time. Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant from council? Okay. Thank you. So this is a public hearing. I'll call for comments from the audience. If there's anyone here, same situation as before, up to three minutes, state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone that would like to come forward? Okay. So I could ask for the opportunity for rebuttal, but I don't think there's anything to rebut, so I'll close the public hearing and move to council level for discussion and action. And this will require a roll call vote. Is there a motion? Okay, we have a motion made by Ms. Baker, seconded by Ms. Friedrichs. Discussion on the motion. Anyone have further comment? Okay. So with that, I will call the question and ask the clerk to please call the roll. Vice Mayor Olam?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Delagloa?
Yes.
Councilmember DeCall?
Yes.
Councilmember Friedrichs?
Yes.
Mayor Merkel? Yes, that motion carries. Thank you for making time to be here this evening. Our next ordinance is 19024 to approve the conveyance of Town... Our next ordinance is 19024 to approve the conveyance of town-owned property on Eldon Street to the Virginia Department of Transportation for the widening of East Eldon Street. I will open the public hearing, recognize John Irish, Deputy Director of Public Works for the staff report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Town Council. Before you have an ordinance to approve the conveyance of town-owned property on Eldon Street to the Virginia Department of Transportation for the widening of East Eldon Street. This ordinance is essentially to convey right-of-way and easements to the Department of Transportation to enhance and to also make available the property needed to widen East Eldon Street. As this project progresses through the design phase, they are now at a point where they need to acquire the property rights to be prepared for the actual construction. Other point of note is that this property, after it's been conveyed to the Department of Transportation, will get conveyed back to the town at a time in the future. This is essentially a vehicle that they need for the funding that's coming through the Federal Department of Highway Transportation. This has been thoroughly vetted by Department of Engineering and Town Attorney's Office.
All right, thank you. Does, does the town attorney have anything to add?
I don't think so unless there are questions.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Are there questions from council for Mr. Irish or Ms. Yates? Yes, sir.
Just to verify, had anything changed since the work session on the 6th?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Okay. Once again, this is a public hearing, we'll call for comments from the audience. Is there anyone that would like to come forward and speak on this item? Okay. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and move to council level once again, and this, this also requires a roll call vote. Madam Vice Mayor.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of 190-24.
Second.
Okay, discussion on the motion.
Look forward to seeing this, this has been a long time in the works.
Anyone else? All right, thank you, I concur, this is going to be a great addition, so I will call the question and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Olam?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Delagula?
Yes.
Councilmember DeCall?
Yes.
Councilmember Friedrichs?
Yes.
Mayor Merkel?
Yes, that motion carries. Our next item is Resolution 19G51 to approve a temporary license agreement to use a designated public space in the alley adjacent to Jimmy's Old Town Tavern for outdoor seating for an event. I'll open the public hearing once again and recognize our town attorney, Lisi Yates, for the staff report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As you said, this resolution will approve a temporary license for Jimmy's Old Town Tavern to use the town alley located behind 689 and 681 Spring Street for outdoor seating. On the date of September 1st, they have received their temporary use permit as well as their noise permit and all other necessary requirements to have that event. Council has approved similar licenses over the course of many years for one or two-day events. This is no different. Everything appears to be in order, including the provision of the required insurance for the event.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the town attorney or the zoning administrator on this item? Ms. Friedrichs.
Just a quick question, didn't we already approve a group of events? Is this a separate thing? Actually, last year, we were, we approved all three of his normal events at one time. This year, we approved the Memorial Day event and he did not have dates for his September event, so we were unable to, to do it all at once, which is really more efficient for both him and the town.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Okay. So I don't know if the applicant or applicant's agent is here, I don't believe I see them. All right, so this is a public hearing and I will call for comments from the audience. Is there anyone here to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, I will close public hearing and move to council level for discussion and action.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of Resolution 19G51. Second.
Okay, we have a motion made by Ms. Baker, seconded by Ms. Friedrichs. Discussion on the motion.
This is always a really fun event and it's even better now with the Beer Garden, so happy to support it.
Bring it on. Anyone else?
I concur.
All right, great. So I will call the question on the motion to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed. That motion carries. Next up is Resolution 19G52 to consider the Herndon Bicycle Network Master Plan to be used as a long-range planning document focused on improving bicycle service levels in the town. I'll open the public hearing, recognize Bryce Perry, our Deputy Director of Community Development, who has the staff report for us.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of Town Council. I'm pretty excited to have the opportunity to present this to you all this evening. The Herndon Bicycle Network Master Plan will serve as the town's first planning document, planning document dedicated solely to the improvement of bicycle facilities and infrastructure in town. I'm going to get into really why we're doing this now, how it's meant to function and what's actually in the plan in these next few slides, but first a bit of background information. Currently, when it comes to long-range guidance for bicycle network improvements, we rely on the 2030 Comprehensive Plan, which really gives some good guiding language for ensuring that we take a multimodal approach to all of our transportation system improvements. We also rely on the Fairfax County Master Bicycle Plan, which was formally endorsed by the Town Council back in 2012. The Herndon Bicycle Network Master Plan, what's being proposed this evening, builds on both of those documents. It reflects the tenants and the principles of those plans, but it expands them and it consolidates it into a singular plan. The draft that is presented to the council this evening, and that was discussed at the work session last week, was, was developed in close coordination with the town's Pedestrian and Bicycle Advisory Committee. So the PBAC served really to steer both the scope and the content of the plan as proposed over the past year and a half, maybe even actually two years on that. The Plan of Commission reviewed the plan as presented this evening, that occurred this past June, and they did provide a recommendation for approval with the resolution that was provided in the staff report. So what, what exactly does this plan do? It has a few jobs. For one, it serves as the preeminent guiding document for bicycle infrastructure, planning, design, policy, programming. It's a real singular source that can be leaned on by decision-makers and by professional staff and by design consultants. A way really to provide a clear and consistent direction for bicycle network improvements. And that's, that's really its chief administrative function. It also serves to promote and encourage cycling as a viable alternative mode of travel by setting the necessary guidance in place to effectively pursue bike-friendly policies. Lastly, to say it as simply as I can, it improves the level of service for cyclists. So it, it recommends specific infrastructure and facility upgrades and updates and improvements ranging from entirely new routes, new off-site trails, to specific amenities like a bike It's comprised of four chapters. The first chapter includes, the first chapter is the introduction, it includes the overview and the purpose of the plan, the background and methodology of the plan, the existing policy guidance, and the information on how the plan is intended to be implemented and managed. The second chapter, probably the most important, this includes the principles and the objectives that the plan follows and really, if effectively employed as it should be, all the decisions on bicycle planning and design shall consider these principles and objectives found in Chapter 2 of the plan. These, the purpose of this chapter, the purpose of the principles and objectives really is to instill broad overarching policies and approaches that will serve really as the foundation for any eventual improvements that do occur to the network, the bicycle They, the principles, there's a whole list of them, I'm not going to go through all of them, but they, they address things like route continuity, connectivity with neighboring jurisdictions, there's principles regarding the consideration of safety for all travel modes when looking at bicycle improvements, and the consideration of all types of cyclists. So there's, there's all, all different types of cyclists, ones, people that cycle for training, people that cycle to commute, people that cycle for local trips, cycle for recreation, there's a whole host of different, different types of cyclists. There's principles about applicable design standards and the provision of amenities, and that's, that's just to name a few. The third chapter is focused on the network map. The map lays out all the existing and proposed bicycle route locations and route facility types. I'm going to go into that map in a little bit more detail here on the next slide, but before I do that, I just wanted to mention the final chapter of the document. This covers the profile of the town's bicycle program and the ongoing program initiatives. This chapter, the bicycle program chapter, as with the rest of the plan, will exist as a bit of a living document. So if the methodology, the implementation strategy that is laid out in the plan, if that is followed, it will be, the plan is expected to be evaluated annually by staff, annually by the PBAC, and updated as necessary, and of course returned to the Town Council as necessary for any, for approval of any revisions, if those updates recommend something that is essentially beyond a change that we can make administratively. So as mentioned, this is the network map that's included within the plan. The solid lines here are proposed routes, the dashed lines, I'm sorry, the solid lines are existing routes, the proposed lines are the, the dashed lines are the proposed routes. The various colors indicate the various route types, so there's shared-use trails, cycle tracks, bicycle lanes and charros. Honestly, at this scale, this map isn't incredibly legible, so I did just want to point out that staff will maintain a larger published version of this map and also a web-based interactive version of it. There are several changes between the network map shown here versus the network map that was endorsed by the Town Council back in 2012 and is part of the county's, the current county's bike plan. What I wanted to point out more than anything else really is how this revision provides bicycle accommodation throughout the town. So the, the current plan, the endorsed plan with the county sort of misses, misses a few neighborhoods in town, a few parts of town, particularly in the southwest quadrant of town. You could see here as I jump back and forth between the existing plan shown here and the, and the proposed plan shown here. So a number of additional routes have been added overall to the network map and the reason for those was really to maximize access, access, inner neighborhood access, access to neighboring jurisdictions, access to the two nearest metro rail stations, Herndon Metro Rail Station, Innovation Station. Access to our regional trail system, we have three regional trails that either fully or partially go through town, the WNOD, Sugarland Run and Follicle. Access to our activity center in town, activity centers in town, the H-Talk, the downtown, the Eldon Street Corridor, and access to local schools and local parks. So those are all, were all considerations in drawing out the new routes. Now, when we look at the different types of facilities, we realize that Plan of Commission that there was some confusion as to what we were actually talking about when we mentioned things like charros and bike lanes and cycle tracks. So to provide some context to the terms, as, as I'm discussing them, I'm going to accompany each with an image here, so you all have that for reference. Charros or shared lane markings, these are on-street bicycle markings that are used in instances where travel lanes are shared between motor vehicles and cyclists. So in an instance like this, a vehicle, obviously this is a vehicle travel lane, but a cyclist can also ride in that lane and share it with the vehicle. You'll see these types of facilities going down Park Avenue currently in the town. These are really meant in instances where there is both low speeds on a road and low volume, low vehicle volumes on the road. Another facility type are bicycle lanes. These are also on-street but off to the side of the road and marked as a dedicated path for the cyclist. So there's no sharing here between modes. Obviously, we've all seen this before, it's, it's easily the most common type of bicycle facility around. We currently have these on Drainsville Road. Where space allows, buffered bike lanes are always preferred. It's essentially the same concept as a standard bicycle lane, but there's some additional separation between the vehicle travel lane and the bicycle lane. In this instance in the photo, there's, it's just, that separation is marked by, by striping on the asphalt. In other cases, you might see some physical vertical barriers or some flexi-posts between the travel lane and the bicycle lane. And then there is cycle tracks. These are off-street, typically above-the-curb facilities that can be either one-way, which is what's, is shown here, and, which is also what will be built on East Eldon Street, east of Herndon Parkway, one-way cycle track. And then two-way cycle tracks, which is, which is what's shown here and which is what is expected to be built on the, on Herndon Parkway on the south side of town. You'll, you'll even see some of that already built in front of the Stanley Martins Metro Square development on Herndon Parkway. Cycle tracks really are used when the, the traffic volumes or the speeds, the volumes are too great or the speeds are too high, where it's necessary to allow for a maximum physical separation between the cyclist and the motor vehicle. So each of the route types shown on the network map, and I'll go back to that for a second. I wanted to point this out, they, they were really carefully selected based off of maximizing the safety of the cyclist in each case. The basis of the evaluation in each case, we used a industry-leading bicycle facility selection model, the same model that's also used by Fairfax County in their bike plan, which takes road speeds and road type and, and daily vehicle trips into account. And that, that actual model is included as an appendix to the plan. I also wanted to point out that in Herndon, cyclists can also use sidewalks, and if they're comfortable doing so and they understand they need to follow the rules of the road, they can also pretty much use any road in town as well. So the intent really with this network map and the plan really is to provide safe, marked bicycle routes and connections for cyclists in a manner that maximizes access to, throughout the town. But it certainly doesn't limit those other options that are available to cyclists if they want to bike in the road or bike on the sidewalk, those are still available to them. Just wanted to point that out. Staff has provided a draft resolution for adoption of the plan and supports that resolution as it is proposed. And that completes my report. Thank you.
Excuse me. Thank you, pardon me. Are there questions for staff on this item? Goodness. Okay, so if, seeing none, there, if there are any comments from the audience, once again, you have up to three minutes to make your comments, state your name and address for the record, and when the red light comes on, try to wrap up. Is there anyone that would like to come forward? Pardon me. Okay. Thank you. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and move to council level for discussion and action. I will entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
I assume.
Yes, thank you, as Chair of the PBAC Committee, I move we approve Resolution 19G52.
All right, so we have a motion to approve made by Mr. Delagula and seconded by Mr. DeCall. Discussion on the motion. Anyone? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd first like to thank staff for all the due diligence they did on this. This is a product I think the town can certainly be proud of. Second, thank you to the PBAC Committee, the members for their work, their dedication, really the commitment to make this a bicycle pedestrian, one-car, zero-car, mobile town. And I think we're being recognized for that. And I'll preemptively thank all the support from my fellow council members. Thank you.
We're putting the pressure on. Further discussion, Mr. DeCall or, or Ms. Baker?
First official bike plan, thank you to staff and big kudos to PBAC. This is really great, I went through the plan and it's very extensive, detailed, and obviously we can build upon it in future as well. And we needed that when we talk about bikeable town, when we talk about environment sustainability, when we talk about, you know, all these, you know, parking issues and traffic issues and all those things. Biking is the future for sure and our town is moving to the right direction with this plan, so thank you.
Yeah, huge thanks to Bryce, this has been such a long process, right? And as the previous PBAC-
And as the previous PBAC Chair, um, the involvement we received from our citizens on that committee and then with—with staff's work, um, it's—it's really impressive what you've put together. It's such a benefit of our small town that we have the ability to, um, really, uh, create this, right? It's much harder on a scale like Fairfax County, so I think it—it really continues to brand ourselves as a bicycle-friendly, pedestrian-friendly, right? That that's our—our brand and our reputation within Herndon. Um, I would also just say, from the perspective of Fab, the Fairfax Alliance of Better Bicycling, that the Chair of that committee is a childhood friend of mine, Sonia, we've been friends since we were kids growing up in New York, and, uh, certainly that committee also is really excited about what we're doing. It is, um, really impactful to the bicycle community. Love seeing the discussion on social media within, uh, the Herndon community about just the importance of this. Um, certainly, there's a lot of dotted lines on that, right? We wanna have those be solid lines, but, um, it's—it's a step in the right direction, and again, just appreciate all the work, Bryce, your team, and, uh, so much citizen involvement as well to get us to this point. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Friedrichs, followed by the Vice Mayor.
Um, I also, uh, definitely thank the staff. I'm, uh, excited to—to notice that, uh, three members of the current Town Council have chaired the PBAC Committee, so this has, uh, been a—a progress, uh, it's been in the works, Vice Mayor Olum, uh, Councilmember Baker, and current Chair, um, uh, Mr. Delagula. Um, one thing I'm noticing that's making me incredibly happy is that the focus on connectivity between areas, the staff seems to really be taking that into account on a number of levels. When Mr. Stromberg talked about new developments, he talked about making sure that each development followed the next development, so that there was a relationship between them, and, um, the same thing is happening with the bike, um, and sidewalks, and connectivity makes a town look more like a community, and in a—in an environment where we're really focused, uh, where most of Fairfax County looks like, uh, one development and then another development and then another development, we're really setting ourselves aside as the jewel box of—of Fairfax County with their planning, and I hope, um, the staff continues with this, um, and I'm very impressed, so thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, I am definitely excited about this. Uh, worked on the plan that came forward in 2012 that went to the county that brought this about, and I can tell you that a lot of those nice little dots were not in front of the schools or even the rec center, and the PBAC Committee was very forceful, and that's what we wanted, and we got the support of council back then, so we really expanded it and, uh, wanted to make sure that people are safe in town, because you can ride on all of our little 25 mile an hour neighborhood streets, but when we don't have the charods showing that they can share the road, then people don't pay attention. I know, uh, quite a few years ago, when they started putting them up over in the area by Wolf Trap, bikers told me that they were yelled at by motor vehicle people to get off of the road, and when the charods went up, they quit getting yelled at, so the people in the cars realized that they had to share the road. So I think this is gonna be a much safer environment for folks and, uh, encourage everyone to get out and maybe do that bike ride on Wednesday night at the Green Lizard that's coming up tomorrow. Thank you for all your hard work.
Uh, yeah, yes, I concur with my colleagues. Um, if we wanna get people out of their cars, we've gotta make it easy and safe for them to do that, or they're gonna stay in their cars. So, uh, this is a big work in progress. I know we are working in conjunction with the staff for the CIP so that there's actually funding to make these things happen as we go forward, and, um, I'm excited to be a part of it. And, um, to Mr. DeCall's point about, um, you know, the parking issues and all that, I will never forget when Green Lizard came forward to put a bike rack in a parking space, and there was a little bit of an uproar about it, and we're like, 20 bikes can go in one parking space? So we—we were able to work that out, so I'm glad that we were, and I anticipate more things like that going forward. So if there's no further discussion, I will call the question on the motion made by Mr. Delagula and seconded by Mr. DeCall to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? That motion carries, and that brings us to our consent agenda, which contains one item this evening. Is there a motion to approve?
Madam? Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that concludes our agenda this evening.
Madam Mayor, seeing no other business, I move we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And we stand adjourned at 7:54 PM. I know, don't blink.